We are starting the meeting of the zoning board of appeals tonight. We will first start with the pledge of allegiance.
The flag is here.
The flag is here.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, the United States of America. It stands one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Jen, do you know, are we still on the open meeting, or did that expire?
They're still on.
Still on, okay.
They extended it.
Pursuant to chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted in person and be a remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandovermass.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their television by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in the public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your questions or comments prior to or during the meeting to jbattersby@northandovermass.gov. That is J.B.A.T.T.E.R.S.B.Y. at northandoverma.gov. Questions and comments will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. So the first thing is the acceptance of the minutes from March 14, 2023. Can I have a motion?
I am moved to accept the minutes from March.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And moving on to a new public hearing of 335 Salem Street.
Notice to see, notice to see by given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, April 11, 2023, at 7:30 p.m. to all parties interested in the petition of Lynn McLaughlin and John McLaughlin for property at 335 Salem Street, map 37B, parcel 54, North Andover, Mass. in the R3 zoning district. The applicants are requesting a finding pursuant to Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.1A, in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of overturning the building commissioner's denial dated March 7, 2023. Specifically, applicants seek a finding from Town and North Andover zoning bylaws from requirements of section 195-7.1A, a contiguous building lot area, CBA, for the purpose of overturning the building commissioner's denial dated March 7, 2023, and allowing the construction of a new single-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Alternatively, the applicants are requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.1A, contiguous building area, CBA, and section 195-10A, A and B, in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new single-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Specifically, applicants have requested CBA needing a relief variance of 3,350 square feet, example, 13.4%. The CBA proposed is 15,000 square feet, example, 61.6%. And the CBA required is 18,750 square feet, example, 75%. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Friday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandra A. Jacobs, Esquire.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's better than Paul's name. The applicant or his representative can approach.
Who would you like to stand?
You can take a seat.
Okay, great.
We don't need you to stand, get comfy.
Put this someplace else so I don't step on it.
We do not want that to happen.
Future connection impossible, so.
Good evening, my name is Mark Johnson, I'm an attorney for Andover representing the McLaughlins. I do have some documents to give you if you'd like to refer to them. And let me start by just giving you some background on this petition and then why certain documents might be relevant. And I appreciate you reading the relief requested. We've, and I'll explain to you a little bit why we sought both relief, both the finding as well as the variance. The McLaughlins bought their property in May of 2004. And they're here tonight, and I'll tell you that when they bought the property, it was their understanding that there could be a second lot created. And in fact, there were plans that were approved for a second lot, but they ended up combining the lots back into one parcel. So when they went, when they decided to sell their house, they made a determination to recreate the second lot. And it was a Form A plan signed by the planning board with a notation, you know, that it...
He's saying, can you get your mic?
Certainly.
While we're stopped, I'm going to ask a question.
Sure.
You say you're going to pass out documents? We've not seen these before?
I know. And we can refer to them if you don't want to see them now.
No, I would have liked to have seen them before we got here.
No, I understand. But I'll go over with you what they are, and then Jack Sullivan can speak to what the basis of the documents are. But let me finish, and I'll explain to you what those documents are.
I'm a little broken right now, bro. Let me just get any clarity on something. You said 2004, they bought the property. You talked about the lots were separated, and the lots were combined. My question is, who combined the lots?
They did. I mean, it was...
Were they, hold on, were they combined versus merger?
I think they actually were combined. I think another plan was put on which combined the lots, and they can speak to that. And then they sought to sell the house and create another lot. And they did a Form A plan that was actually signed by the planning board with a notation that it did not indicate that it was zoning compliant. But there was a Form A plan that was signed, a Form A plan was recorded, but the planning board did not take a position regarding zoning compliance. The building inspector has taken the position that the new lot does not meet the contiguous lot area requirement. And the lot is located in our three zoning district. There's a minimum lot area requirement of 25,000. The property has 25,360 square feet. The issue here is the definition of contiguous buildable area. And I do have just a, that section of the bylaw, if you'd like it, or if you have it before you, you can take a look at it. But I'm happy to give you a copy of that section of the bylaw that we've referenced in the petition.
I take copy.
Is this already in the application?
Oh, that's what that is?
I mean, it's just...
It's included in the application?
Yes.
All right, let me see if I understand this right. Because I understand merger law, but it doesn't sound like that's what's going on here. So they bought in 2004. They bought two separate lots. They were taxed separately.
No.
It was one lot?
They bought one lot.
Okay.
They bought one lot. Prior to them buying the lot, I believe it had been separated. It came back together, so it's been taxed as one lot.
This is where I'm getting caught up.
Could I provide some history for you?
I would love some.
My family is...
Can you just step to the podium just so it can be recorded? Thank you.
My family has lived at...
Identify yourself.
What's that?
Just say who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry, John McLaughlin. Members of the board?
My family has lived at the house since 1969, and I've been there since I've been six years old. And my father passed away in 1981. And if you remember that time, President Reagan had just taken office, double-digit inflation...
I wasn't born yet.
Some folks will remember, double-digit inflation, double-digit unemployment. My mom had just gone back to work. She's trying to figure out how this is all going to work. She wakes out and says, I got to sell the place. She divided the lot, had it perk-tested. She was thinking of building a little, kind of a small house that she would spend the latter part of her life in. The lot was divided, it was perk-tested, divided at that time.
So legally divided, there was legally...
Legally divided, and she paid taxes on two lots for a couple of years.
Okay.
And for a few years.
But she owned, she owned both lots?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Did she own both lots in one name?
Yes, it would have been. That my father's name wouldn't have been on it at that point.
Mr. and Mrs. John Smith?
I don't think that's what happened. I don't think a merger law took place, but we're going to find out.
Okay.
I understand where you are.
Okay, you hear where I'm going?
I'm going with you, I hear you. Okay, so we have two separate lots.
So it was divided for a few years, taxes paid on...
Both.
Two bills, you know, as separate...
What brought them together?
As Lynn and I continued to live there, and, you know, we'd been married, and figured we'd give it a shot and try to do the big happy family thing. And as it looked at, my mom was living in the in-law apartment, that kind of having two lots wasn't going to be an issue, that she wasn't going to use that second lot to build herself a home.
So then you guys re-merged them?
Yeah, she re-merges.
Okay, so your mom merges them to make them one lot? So she does it, it's not by law?
In what year did she re-merge them?
I'm going to take a guess, 1986, 1987. And the division would have been probably in early 82. My dad passed away.
The division would have been in 82?
I believe, somewhere around there, late 81, early 82.
So 86, the lots go back together?
Approximately, I don't know the exact date.
Like 80s?
Somewhere in there.
Somewhere mid-80s?
80s, 90s.
Yeah, I know there were a few years where there were separate tax bills on the property because I was helping to pay them.
So she merges them back together, and then we come here today?
Yeah, and, you know, we've been living continuously at the house. We purchased the property formally in 2004 as, to ensure her financial future.
Can I ask a world's dumbest question?
Yeah, sure.
Why would she merge them?
Because she wasn't going to build on it.
People don't think about having two lots, honey.
Yeah, and she was paying taxes on two, higher tax bill for something that was not going to be used apparently in the near future.
Here's my question.
Sure.
The lot line that you're creating now?
Mm-hmm.
Is this the same lot line that she had?
Yes, very, very close.
Very, very close? Are we talking very, very close, like a foot very, very close? Or are we talking like a few feet very, very close?
That the configuration of the lot with the, to meet frontage and with that line down the back was how it was divided in the early 80s.
Okay.
You know, in terms of meeting square footages and, you know, and it had been approved, it had been entered into records here, and again, taxes paid on two properties for a few years.
Okay.
I hope that provides...
It clarifies.
Some clarity there, yeah.
Do we have any questions floating out? Oh.
Okay.
Sure.
That answers some of your questions with the history.
Does, thank you.
So who's going to build the house? Him?
I'm sorry?
I said, these diagrams of the house.
I mean, that's what we, that's the intention, is to build a house. We still need to get other approvals to do that. It's possible the exact location may move a little bit, but that's, you know, that's the style of house.
Is he going to build the house, or is he going to sell the lot to have a house built on it?
I'm not sure if they've made a decision. They'll probably sell the lot, but I'm not... So what brings us here, what brings us here today is the section of the bylaw, which is 195-7.1A, which talks about contiguous building area. And what it says is that as of April 28 of 86, the area of new lot created, you know, at least 75% of the minimum lot area required for zoning shall be contiguous land, other than land located within a line identified as a wetland resource area in accordance with the Wetland Protection Act, and, and, we believe is a critical word, and the Town of North Andover Wetland Protection bylaw. And we've given you a letter from, from Jack Sullivan, and he's here tonight, that this lot does not have a wetland resource area under both the bylaw and the Wetland Protection Act. It's a resource area only under the bylaw. And therefore, it was our belief that the by, the plain reading of the bylaw would be that you have to have a resource area under both, and we don't. And I don't think there's any question that we don't. The other unique thing about this, this property is there are no wetlands on the property. The resource area is a result of wetlands being on abutting property, but not being on the property that McLaughlin, the McLaughlins own.
Not to interrupt, but along the same line. Typically, when I've seen these in the past, I can see the abutting properties. And I'm familiar with the house and the abutting property with the pond. And what I, okay, so as I look, as you're speaking, and as I look at this, this only shows me the lot. It doesn't show me the, I'm going to say, adjoining lots where there is, where there is, I'll call it conservation, or there is water. So that, I'm just, I was kind of surprised because this picture is, I'm going to say it's too sterile for me.
I mean, the picture of the lot showing, no wetlands on the lot, but it's on the abutting land, and I can have Jack talk to that.
Well, and I don't mean to interrupt the presentation, but since you've talked about there is no wetlands, I'm saying, I was looking, I went over there, and I've been by it millions of times. Okay, I mean, and so there is clearly an adjoining lot with a lot of conservation, and so I would think there is there creeks, tributaries, you know, when it rains. I mean, it's, it's, it's downhill. Okay, so I was looking for that kind of stuff, and I don't see it.
Okay.
Can I just add to that, Mark? Jack Sullivan, I'm the engineer. On the plot plan we provided, on the abutting lot, we do show a drainage ditch, and it says BVW, that it leads to a BV, so we do on the western...
Would you point that out, please?
Can you see it up there?
Yep, I can see it up there. Jen, can you pan, or can someone pan that drawing down a little bit?
Is it on the locus map that you're talking about?
Oh, perfect.
Perfect.
So if this helps, I know I'm not by the microphone. This is our subject lot. There's a drainage ditch that goes here, then opens up to a wetland area. You can see BVW, BVW, BVW. That's the off-site. So you can see, here's, here's our lot line. The wetland's entirely off our site. We do show the 100-foot wetland buffer that comes onto the property. So we do show that Norris Environmental Services, they do wetland delineations. Or was it Sea Camp that came up for this one?
The last one?
Yeah, and then Norris.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so we had Norris and Sea Camp look at this. And flags were hung and located, so it is shown.
Thank you.
Can I, I guess since everyone's interrupting already?
Well, no, I would like to finish.
I don't mind being interrupted if it's, I'll leave it up to you. I mean, I don't mind.
You can continue.
Okay. All right, so I think we're at the point that there is no wetlands located on the lot. It's a result of wetlands being on adjacent lots. And that was something the McLaughlins were not aware of when they bought the property. They weren't aware of it when they, when, initially, when it was subdivided and then put back together. They became aware of it when they had work done. But it's fairly unique in that there are no wetlands on the lot, yet under the interpretation that the "and" means "or", it would exclude land from the definition of contiguous building area as a result of there being a buffer zone under solely the town bylaw and not under the Wetland Protection Act. And we believe that that's not the reading, not the plain wording of the bylaw section. The, the basis for the variance if this board does not agree with our interpretation of the reading of the bylaw would be that the property appears to be in proximity to a abutting land that has wetlands, but no wetlands on the property. And that's fairly unique in this situation. The lot otherwise is compliant with zoning. And the development of the property as a single-family residence would be certainly consistent with what else goes out there in the zoning district. It appears, and I'll let Jack talk to that, that up until about 2020, there are a number of plans that had been approved by the planning board, which included land in the contiguous building area, which did have...
Planning or zoning?
Planning. I don't know of another zoning case, and you probably know it better than...
We look at every application on its own face, so it would be somewhat irrelevant anyway.
It wouldn't be relevant, but, you know, we know that there were plans that were endorsed by the planning board, which included, within the buildable area, land that was, had a buffer under just a wetland, under the local bylaw, but not under the Wetland Protection Act. And since 2020, there may have been a new reading of the section of the bylaw, which appears to really provide that instead of saying that you exclude land that has a resource area under both, under the Wetland Protection Act and the local bylaw, the interpretation seems to rewrite that to say that you would exclude land that's under, that's within a resource area in accordance with the Wetland Protection Act or the Town of North Andover bylaw. And we think that changes the meaning of the section. And during the period of time McLaughlins have owned the property, you know, the interpretation of this section has been its plain meaning and the plain reading. I don't think there's any ambiguity between how you read the section of the bylaw. I think it says you need to, you need to have a well-end area in accordance with both. And that's, that's the way it's been for a long time. And we believe that's probably the way it's been interpreted up until a couple of years ago. And that's what brings us here. And Jack can talk a little bit about, you know, the history of plans.
Yeah, sure. If I have a chance.
Before, if I can interrupt, I don't mean to be rude, but I do. Would you clarify? Okay, I mean, since much of what we're in discussion about is the impact that the buffer zone has.
Right.
So there's the drainage ditch, and there's the buffer zone. And, you know, instead, you know, and you're trying to interpret "and", and what does all this mean? I'm just, who established the buffer zone? How did that, how did that, how does, why does that appear on the diagram?
Okay. Okay, so why it appears on the diagram is because we had a botanist go out to the property. They went off-site because the wetlands are off-site. They hang, hang flags where they believe the, you know, they look at soils, they look at plant types. They say, okay, this qualifies as a bordering vegetated wetland. They hang flags. I go out and do a survey, I locate those flags. So those flags represent the edge of the wetland. Okay? Then from the edge of the wetland, there's a 100-foot corridor that's protected. If it was a river, if this was, if there was a river running through here, there'd be 200 feet protected. But where this is bordering vegetated wetlands, it's 100 feet. Under the state statute, under the State Wetland Protection Act, the, there is no associated protected buffer. If you do work within 100 feet, you have to file for a wetland permit. But the, the local North Andover bylaw, they protect the full 100 feet under the code. So that's why it's critical we're saying the word "and" versus "or". So your bylaw reads "and". So under the Wetland Protection Act, the 100 feet would not be included as a protected wetland resource area.
I can tell you, okay, continue.
If I'm making sense, I'm trying to make it simple.
You're making, you're making sense? That might be because I've had to deal with conservation.
Okay.
Have you guys gone to conservation?
We have not, and we know that we're going to have to, but...
Because I can tell you from my experience, I think this is going to be interesting on how conservation deals with it. And knowing that you're going to have to go through conservation, I would want to know what conservation's viewpoint is on this.
Well, let me just step back one. We would only have to go to conservation if we're doing work within that 100-foot buffer.
Okay.
So if you, if you see on the plan, you know, there may be the opportunity, you construct the house, the driveway, you do some site grading, and you stay outside. You know, a lot of my clients, I say, let's try to stay out of the 100 feet. If you have to go into it, then we file. But in this case...
Okay, but you just said you have to go to conservation.
If we have to, we will. But right now, we don't have what would be looked at as a, as a legal lot yet, or a lot conformity with zoning. If we have to go to conservation, we will. But the first step, I believe, is to confirm that it's a lot that meets the contiguous building area of the bylaw. And we believe we do.
Does conservation have to accept your delineation of the wetland?
Yes, so typically, so when I, when I, when we file for a building permit, so let's, let's say this goes well, we agree, we file, you know, we come to some agreement, they would file for a building permit. I go out to the site with the conservation agent, we look at the line. If she doesn't agree with the line, or if she feels like, oh, this work will be within 100 feet, she wouldn't sign off on the building permit. But there's some sites I'm 150, 200 feet away. But each site that's filed, if she thinks there's a question, she'll call me. I go out and I walk the site. I do that 20 to 30 times a year.
Okay.
So the, the wetlands that we're talking about are a drainage ditch?
It's a drainage ditch.
Okay, so it was created at some point to...
It could have been, but, but the way that town looks at it, it could be...
Oh, no, understood, I'm just wondering.
It could have been man-made, but now there's signs of vegetation that's established over time. And it does open up to a larger area that...
Gotcha.
Does it run into that pond of that house?
It runs, it runs out into that pond.
Then I'm going to say water flows through it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is there a drain, like a street drain attached to it?
I don't know.
Okay. I mean, I was wondering that because I know that there are some designations for wetlands that require a 200-foot buffer. I believe there... I believe they're vernal pools, so if this is not designated that way, then it would not require-
So, that's why we hired a professional company to come out, look at this. So, we're not trying to say, oh, it's not a wetland. They were saying, you know, they've worked in town for 20, 30 years as well.
And they drew the buffer zone line, not just the delineation of the wetlands.
I drew the buffer zone line.
Right.
I draw the 100-foot buffer zone. All they, they go out, they go out with augers, they look at soil types, they look at vegetation, they hang flags, then it's up to me to locate the flags.
Right.
And I show the buffers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause he's just measuring 100 foot off of that line.
I understand that. I guess what I'm saying is like, you know, since I know that there are like, a lot of different buffer zones. There's non-disturbance zones, there is no-build zones, there's, you know, resource protection zones. It could be 25 feet, it could be 200 feet. So, I'm wondering sort of what wetlands expert was involved in determining that it was 100-foot buffer zone.
Because this was a bordering vegetated wetland. This ditch doesn't qualify as a year-round stream. There's other sites, the mosquito brook, I just did one on Ray Street. We had that flag, that's a 200-foot setback from the brook. But in this case, this is just bordering vegetated wetland. So, but that's the critical delineation in this, is that the state doesn't include the 100-foot buffer zone as a wetland resource area, but under the local town code, it does. But that's where, to the statement "and" versus "or".
Putting all your money on one word.
Putting all our money on "and". But, I wanted to say one more thing. Until, I've done a lot of A&R plans, I've done a number of subdivision plans. In May of 2020, I submitted an A&R plan at 800 Massachusetts Avenue for Tom's Rico in the old center, it was the North Andover-
The old meeting house?
The old meeting house.
Yep.
We broke that out into three lots, and we filed with the planning board. And then, I got comments saying, oh, you didn't figure your CBA correctly, you have to exclude the 100-foot buffer zone of the wetland. I'm like, what?
Coming from planning?
From planning. So, first, that was in May of 2020. Now, I had done plans in 2019, 2018, I've done plans back to 2005. This never came up. So, I don't know why it came up, and since that time, the town's been consistent in that inter- I'm sorry, in that interpretation. But, I don't know, I don't know where it came from. At the time, we did it because it didn't impact our development. But in this case, now we have a case, it does impact it. So, we're here.
So, you- This isn't a subdivision plan?
No, this was an A&R, an A&R, A&R plan.
An A&R plan, so, but to get the A&R plan accepted, you need one of these options approved. So, you haven't done the A&R yet?
No, we did, we did do the A&R.
Yeah, oh, you did.
The planning board did endorse it. But we had to put a note on the plan that the CBA was undetermined. Because we were at odds with how it was calculated.
Okay.
And the planning board looked at and said, okay, you have lot frontage-
So, the lot has been subdivided and created?
It's been recorded.
Okay.
But we wouldn't be able to pull a building permit because-
So, now the question is, is it a build, is it a buildable lot?
Right, just because, just because the planning board endorses it, it doesn't mean it-
Right, yeah.
It still Paul's call on the zoning portion of it.
And I believe the only reason why it would not be, there's any question, is the definition of CBA. And-
Well, you say definition, are you talking about, there are two different definitions. I mean, the town has its definition, and then there is the, you know, you refer to the state or to the water, the water, the water conservation part.
No, I'm referring to the wording of the zoning bylaw. Zoning, wording of the zoning bylaw is that you would not include an area identified as a wetland resource area under the Wellness Protection Act and the North Andover Wetland bylaw. So, it's our belief that you need both. And if it isn't a resource area under both the bylaw and under the Wellness Protection Act, then it can be included in the calculation of the CBA. Because we read the "and", what the word "and" normally means.
So, if it's "or", if it's "or",
Or, then- Or would be different.
Then the more restrictive of it regulates you.
Yeah, then "or",
And the North Andover one, the "or" includes the 100-foot buffer is part of that.
Right, but the word is "and".
But the, yeah, but by the state, you can go, it's less restrictive.
So, this was brought to our town attorney, gave him a determination. You have a letter, you want to ensure, do you have a letter?
I never got the letter.
Can we have an idea of what the letter said, then? I mean, I'd want to see it at some point, but-
I could go down and make a copy for you, I think it would be worth it, unless it-
I mean, I've asked for the letter, I've never gotten the letter for some reason, but-
If I can bother you for that?
Yeah, we need to see that, Paul. I mean, if there's more legal's involved.
Well, do you have a preference of which method?
He wants "and". I think the preference for any of the ones-
No, 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 cause he can get a variance. He can ask for a variance.
We did.
So, they don't need that, if we give them a variance, they don't need to worry about the other issue.
I mean, I, I mean, I know, town council explained to me how she interpreted it. I mean, she, I think, and you read a letter, is basically saying that "and" can also mean "or", under the way she interpreted it. But I'll let you read her letter.
Do you know if she looked into, so the part of the Massachusetts general law that you've cited, the regulations that you've cited to say that the state laws are, don't include the buffer zone is the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners Buffer Zone Guidebook? Do we know if that's the most up-to-date regulations on how to determine wetlands? Cause I guess I'm wondering maybe if something changed in 2020? Have you started seeing a lot of different interpretations all of a sudden?
No.
There was no update to that guidebook?
No.
And I don't think there's been any question that it, that we don't have a resource area under both. I think the question is, how do you read the sentence? We read it as you need both, and the other interpretation is that you need just one.
Sorry, maybe I misheard you. Did you say that you didn't think that there was a question that it was protected under both?
No, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a question that it, that is not, there is not a resource area under the Wellness Protection Act.
Gotcha.
Okay? And we're not questioning that there's a resource area under the local bylaw. But, the issue here is that, under the reading of the definition, you would need both because of the word "and", and I think that's how it's been interpreted up until, my understanding, 2020. And nothing has changed, as far as we know, from prior to 2020 to after 2020.
Right, no, I understand your point, I guess, I'm not, so I'm not a lawyer, I'm an arborist. I, so I don't know the most up-to-date law, which is why I was asking if there was an up-to-date. You know, so I'm, I would have personally loved if there was an excerpt from that, or maybe a larger, instead of just citing it, and then I have to go and look for it.
And if there's more information you'd like, we're happy to, yeah, we're happy to come to another meeting and give it to you, this information you think that you're missing, that you would like.
So, but I, I guess that's why I ask if you have a preference of overturning the building commissioner or getting the variance?
I mean, I think a preference would be to overturn the building inspector.
How many votes are required for that? So, variance, you'll need four votes and-
Yeah, and variance, we need four, only because a variance has to be acted on within two years. So, and who knows where the economy is gonna be? But, but if we end up with a variance, we'll, yeah.
How many votes do you need to overturn?
You've been here the longest, I've never done an attorney finding.
I can't recall doing something like this.
Is it permitted or is it by law?
My best guess would be four out of five. Do you still need a super majority?
Majority?
But I'm not a Philadelphia lawyer, I'm not even a New England lawyer.
I mean, listen, I'm not either. Who, me?
Yeah.
We had someone come in within a few years who was trying to overturn Paul's rulings.
Do you know what happened? I wasn't, well-
I'm really fuzzy on it.
Do we know if it's, if there are, like, bylaws associated with that? I was gonna say, I don't think my, what I have is up-to-date, or I don't know if it's up-to-date.
Yeah, before, before 2020, if there was a lot, and there were wetlands on the lot, I figured the CBA right to that wetland line. And I'd show the amount of upland area, and generate my CBA number. And did that, since I've been working in North Andover since 2005. And then all of a sudden, in 2020, it changed.
Well, different board, different chairman, different-
I didn't know if it was a different board, maybe a different building inspector, read it differently. I'm not sure what happened.
He was here in 2020. Paul's been here for a while.
It might have been when Paul came. He might have had a different interpretation of the zoning.
Unless you guys have anything else to add, since we're waiting for Paul?
Yeah.
I was gonna see if there's any abutters. I mean, we didn't receive any letters, but I don't know if there's anybody here in the gallery that would like to speak? Nobody? Okay. Figured I just wouldn't waste time.
No emails?
I don't, I will have Jen check after she is working on the more important thing of finding out how many votes we need, which is probably four.
So, I have another question about if you get a variance and you have to act within two years. This variance isn't actually asking to- Well, I guess I'm not clear on it. This is a variance so that you can create it as a buildable lot. It's not a variance to actually build the house, right?
Right.
They don't need that.
So, right, 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 so, so by creating-
Creating a lot might be, putting it in separate ownership may be sufficient exercise.
Right, that's wrong.
Yep.
So, you may not have to act on it in two years, is-
But if the next owner wanted to build something, they would have to apply for another variance? No, no.
No, the lot, the lot is been created-
No, no, after two years, like if it went up to- The problem, so, so long as they have front, rear, side setbacks, they're gonna be fine. Right. If, if, if the zoning changes and we start doing, you know, 50-foot setbacks, then they might be problematic, cause I can tell you right now, if you come to me in three years wanting to build after setbacks have changed, you'd probably get a "no".
Right.
Probably get a "no". There's also always the possibility that Massachusetts general laws might be updated to exclude that, right? Well, and that's why, as much as people get these kind of decisions that allow for them to build, and they have the two years, I sit here and say, on a financial aspect, make it work even if it's putting in just the foundation. Right. Because, once time goes past, it almost becomes a- You never know. You know, you should have done it then. Right. You shouldn't have waited. Alright, if you guys can just give us a sec so that we can all get- Okay, I'm a bit of a slow reader too, but everyone's gonna be very patient. Okay, thank you.
What did you say, any majority?
Majority, three out of five.
So, you really only have to read the last page, right?
You really only had to read the last page.
Right? I mean, did I take this right?
You just got educated.
I just have to read the last page.
We taught you something.
You're reading ahead, you always read ahead in novels, to see how it ends.
I mean, listen, when legal decisions come in, you normally read the very last page, the last paragraph, and look for the big words.
I'm gonna read all of this stuff and translate it all together, and then it's all summed up on the last page.
In two lines.
Two lines.
Let Stephen Mar finish.
Well, so-
Hold on.
So, how do you represent your general knowledge?
You were educated.
I think they just wanted to see how well we do things.
What do you got, Frank?
I guess I'm not clear on the, so the minimum lot size required is, is what?
25.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
For the R-3 district, 25,000 square feet.
Okay, which you have, and then 75% of that area needs to be...
Eighteen thousand seven fifty.
Needs to be contiguous to be a buildable land, yeah.
Okay, so if you, it's, it's, it's not that much if you don't include the buffer zone?
Right.
So you're, okay.
So 75% is 1850, is that what it is, quick numbers?
Eighteen seven fifty.
Eighteen seven fifty?
Seven fifty, that's twenty, seventy-five percent.
Yeah, 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 I understand. And with counting that out, how much land do they have?
Fifteen four.
Fifteen?
Fifteen thousand four hundred.
Four hundred.
So 3,000 square feet per se, right?
Thirty-seven hundred.
Three thousand three hundred fifty, right?
Thirty-three hundred square feet. Which is on a percentage basis?
Sixty-one percent.
Well, there has sixty-one percent.
The, the, the 3,000 is 13.4%.
13.4%.
The 15,4 is 61.6%. Just to be clear on the, I mean, I can reference the law myself, but the, the 100-foot buffer zone is not a no-build zone. It's a protected area, right?
The 50 to the 100.
So what this basically comes down to, in my opinion, so we have a lot that was approved at one time as a separate lot. And due to new laws and new requirements, this lot has become out of requirements.
Well, possibly, because it might have been, because wetlands move. So it's very possible, and I don't know, and we haven't been provided anything, it's possible that back in the 80s, the 100-foot wasn't even there because the wetlands over time, like my wetlands have grown over time.
Yeah, they shift.
They shift out and they spread, which is one of the reasons why you...
That doesn't even matter, right? I mean, what was, what it was...
But it does, but it does, because if the 100-foot...
No, no, I mean, I mean, the fact that it was subdivided once and then consolidated. I mean, that's just, that's history, but it doesn't affect this, you know.
Right.
It might, it might affect our, our opinion of how to handle it, but
But the point being is...
From a legal perspective or zoning perspective, it doesn't have an impact.
So, so let me throw this two cents in. What if they were to go to conservation?
Well, I first wanted to hear if there were any other questions from the board.
Okay, and if conservation gives it, you know, the blessing, who am I to override conservation? But right now, you asked me to make a decision before conservation on something very ambiguous.
I agree.
Well, we're asking you to make a decision as to what the bylaw says.
Well, so here's our problem, though. We have what the bylaw says. I heard you out, totally hear what you say. But then we have the wonderful last two lines of this letter
Yeah.
that is basically saying, for the foregoing reasons, any land located within a line identified as wetland resource area cannot count towards the CBA calculation when creating a new lot.
And we, but we obviously disagree with that, and...
And I guess I sit here and, and what I'm looking at, and obviously the board would have to agree, is I'm not the conservation specialist. I'm also not the zoning board specialist, but I can wrap my head around zoning far better than I can wrap my head around where conservation stands on things.
So, but the way I understand it...
I don't know if conservation would...
Conservation might not even have to rule on this.
No, 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 con... The thing, my thing becomes is, what is conservation's, you point on this, conservation wouldn't have to put two cents in if they had the 25,000 square feet, because they're not building in the 100. But because the issue comes down to where does conservation stand on, do, can you count the wetlands? Because understand, they're probably not going to do anything in the area between the 50 and 100, but if they were, conservation's involved.
That's right, but, but I guess they'd only need a NOI from Concom if they're doing that. Otherwise, it's a zoning question of whether that area is, is...
But it's not.
But it's not, but I agree.
I, I, I look at it as, this, this is intertangled too much with conservation. I don't think it's... There have been plenty of times where we've had issues come through where planning has said, in this perfect situation, planning has already said for this project, yeah, we're good, but you need to find out what zoning says. And now, my position is zoning needs to find out what conservation says. If conservation comes back and says, yes, you can include it, then that...
But I think Concom can only say whether it, they agree that it's a wetland or not.
Yeah, they're not gonna...
And that they'd agree that that's the 100-foot buffer. They couldn't, they couldn't rule on whether it applies to the zoning rule.
I agree with Frank.
This has already gone through, this is with conservation's, this is mutual with conservation, myself going to the town attorney on this to, to, to find...
So the town attorney and you and conservation and town council all have come back and this is what our answer is.
This is our answer.
So it's about whether or not we take the town council's interpretation of the bylaw versus the petitioners?
I mean, I'm no lawyer.
Me neither.
I, I, I think, I mean, it's true.
All we consider are variance.
Well, but we do, there's two decisions, and maybe we should handle them one at a time. One is, do we overrule the decision, local decision on the bylaw? And then the second one is, if that is not overruled, do you want to go for variance? I have a hard time doing these both at the same time.
Okay, well...
Good point. What are you doing?
Well, I'm doing the order that was suggested by the petitioner, which was he would like to overrule Paul's decision. And it appears to me that the town council has sided with building inspector to say that you do count that land.
You mean you don't?
Or you don't count that land, yeah, I can get all the ball stuff missing.
I, I, trust me, it took me a couple readings.
It's hard for me to, to reconcile, it's hard for me to, you're asking me to make a decision to reconcile state versus local and make the decision, try to do an interpretation. And I would think I'm probably the least qualified person here to even attempt that, therefore I would probably not attempt.
Let me try to simplify a little bit, and this is how we're looking at it. I don't think there's a question as to whether or not it's a resource area in accordance with the local bylaw. And I don't think there's a question that it is not a resource area under the Wetlands Protection Act. So I don't think that's in dispute. I mean, I think town council agrees with that. I think, I think Paul agrees with that. You can tell me if I'm wrong, but there's never been, in my conversations with town council, there's never been a question as to whether or not it's a resource area under the Wetlands Protection Act. So we start with, we start with the basis that it's not. And then I say, read the plain language of the bylaw. I mean, not, not, you know, the town council in two pages has, you know, somehow, you know, tells you that you ought to look at and is or. I mean, and I say, look at the plain language of the bylaw, because that's what the citizens of North Andover look at. And that's what someone coming into town, that's what somebody who decides what to do with their property looks at. And that the plain language is not ambiguous. I don't think you can find any ambiguity in that.
Well, yeah, but what did the town council take the question mark out of the arena with the, with the last page?
I, I think if you read her letter, she's, read her opinion, she's trying to explain, and it takes two pages to do it, you know, why and is or. And, and I'm saying, you look at the definition in the bylaw, because that's what people have to look at. I mean, laypersons, people look at the bylaw, and they read it, and it says and.
Well, for me, I look at this thing, and I get confused, and I ask an expert to interpret the law, and she interprets the law like this.
I, I understand that, but I'm also...
That's the way I see it. I'm just a layperson.
And in the plain language of and, like, you know, like, if a teenager goes to their parents, says, hey, mom and dad, can I go to this party? And only one of them actually says something out loud about it. You said, yeah, my parents said yes. You said both of them, you know, but they're not, even if they didn't both say explicitly.
I mean, I would say that, again, if you look at the bylaw, it's clear what the bylaw says. It's not ambiguous. I know it's contrary to what town council is telling you, but it is clear, and that's what people in town look at.
Yeah, but is it my job to interpret the law or is the town council's job to interpret the law?
I, I think it's your job as a zoning board member to...
And I shouldn't take the town council's opinion?
To, to look at, to look at the definition, and do you think the definition is ambiguous? I don't think it is.
I mean, I don't think that saying and makes it not ambiguous, though. I mean, I think the idea that, that and is, is a expla, or is speaking to this, this connected spirit of both of the laws that are involved in this, is that like, you know, is this request in line with the spirit of the regulations involved? You know, I don't, I would say it sounds like it's not, or like the overturning of this decision is not in line with the spirit of either of the laws, even if the definitions are slightly different.
I mean, if that's it or, I'd look at this differently, but it, but it doesn't. And, and I guess I'm just saying that as a, as a zoning board member, you look at the plain language, because that's what people in town look at, and I don't think it's confusing.
Well, I think...
But you're hired to say that.
Yeah, I'm reading it.
Right, you're hired to say that.
So...
And the town hired a lawyer to say that?
So I'm not a lawyer either, okay?
I agree. But who, who do we listen to? The town lawyer or to him?
Okay, but, so I'm listening to the town lawyer here, and they have their conclusion, but in their analysis, on the second, the second paragraph of the second page, it says, but the word and could take on a different meaning. So when they say could, I mean, if they meant that it does take on a different meaning, I think they'd say does take on a different meaning. They said it could. I mean, so I think they're, in their analysis, there's an opening there, that it could be established, you know, assessed either way. Then they look through all their rationale and come to that conclusion.
Right, I mean, I...
But, but in their, in their sort of analysis portion of this thing, they, they put in could, not does take on. So, I mean, I, I, I think we have some ability to look at the town council's recommendation and factor it into what we're thinking, but I, I, I think the whole thing is kind of, you know, could be, it could be considered either way. I don't, I don't really know. I'm just, I just think there's an opening either way for this thing.
I read, I read this paragraph of town council. Wetlands Protection Act establishes the minimum statewide standards within local communities free to adopt more stringent controls. So the more stringent controls that the town North Andover has adopted in its own bylaws are what Paul was measuring against when he said it was not a contiguous building area. I'm really uncomfortable going against what I think is the intent of the bylaw and how the town council interprets the bylaw and going against the way the building inspector is much more experienced in this than I do, has interpreted the bylaw. It, it makes me very uneasy to do that. I mean, I get, I get the ands and the ors and all that stuff, although I really appreciate explaining, because I scratched my head over the description of this for quite a while. So you've made it clearer, but it doesn't make it any easier for me to say, but let's just ignore the town's bylaw and go with, because it's not inclusive of the state.
I, I understand that. All I can say, and it just goes back to, if you, if I gave you this paragraph to read and you read it without, you know, any background on, on this case or anything else, I think you come away with the belief that it requires it to be a resource area under both, because that's what the and is. And, and I'm just, you know, my, my position on this is simply, the plain wording of it has a word and, doesn't say or. And someone reading it should be able to rely upon the actual words within the paragraph. And you shouldn't have to, you know, town council goes back into a whole history of it. That's not what someone wanting to do something with their property will look at in North Andover. You go to the bylaw and figure out, what can I do, what can't I do? And you look at this, and it goes, and means you have to have both. I don't, it's not a resource area under Wetlands Protection Act, and therefore I'm okay.
No, I'm saying, you know, the, you're making it a hard and, and I get it. I'm just hesitant to agree with it.
On this, on, on page two, paragraph four, it says, in the middle of paragraph four, it says, the local requirement trumps what is required under MGL blah, 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 blah. And so there, we're being guided here, the local requirement is what trumps.
I know, I think what he's saying is that according to our bylaws, it has to be, if you take a Venn diagram of the Wetlands Protection Act and our bylaws, it has to be in the middle, in the overlap, for it to be considered impactful to this. I guess it's a matter of if we take that interpretation, which is not a legal requirement. It's a, it's a legal suggestion, so... And I would say, I'm not clear why the assertion that any plain person reading the, the act would interpret it this way, so we must interpret it this way, when there are lots of situations where a plain person might make a decision about what they are gonna do with their property, and the building inspector would say, no, you can't do that. And then it might come to here, and then we can talk about it again. Like, there's lots of situations where we're all required at different stages to interpret the language and the law to the best of our ability and to the spirit of the people creating it, which are, are all of the people that we live with in town that we all see every day. So I don't think that it, it's an obligate that we say, okay, it seems like it makes sense that someone reading this might just say that it means the center of that Venn diagram, so we have to do it that way.
I mean, I, I think, again, it's just, I think it's not ambiguous. And to the question as to whether or not, you know, the local bylaw can be more restrictive than the DEP, it can. But it doesn't, it still doesn't change the definition within the, within the section. It still requires both, whether, whether it's more restrictive or not. In this particular case, dealing with contiguous building area, you need to have both, and if you don't, then you can include it. And that's...
And that's your interpretation, and this is the whole, the whole hurrah that we're having here. It's, we all have our paradigms on how we interpret this. And just as we can, when we conclude, the next one that comes will be interpreted differently. There is no, it's an art, it's not a science.
And I understand that.
Unless there's an equal precedent, which to my understanding, there's not on this.
No, this is precedent as to what, how it's been dealt with prior to 2020. And, you know, prior to 2020, you need to have both. And if you didn't, then it was countered against a contiguous building area, and Jack can, you know, can, can talk about that. But that's, but that, and that's consistent with, that's consistent with why I think it's not ambiguous.
But your comment is, you just said prior to 2020. Now, you picked that up from the architect, or the surveyor. I mean, that's where you're picking that up from. I mean, and so again, it's all of, that's your interpretation.
I mean, I have plans...
How do I know what happened prior to 2020? Maybe I experienced something different.
And I have plans prior to 2020. I can provide it to you tonight. We can come back next month, and I can provide you the plans. But there are still subdivision plans that were prior to 2020 that we just located, and, you know, which is consistent with the way we're interpreting this. And, you know, so, so, and we're happy to come back next month and continue this, but that's, you know, that, that's how we looked at this.
We, this, this has become a interpretation situation. This is what, this is what it's been reduced to. How do we interpret it?
Yeah, no, and I agree with you.
Can I, can I ask you a quick question? Because I think it impacts whether we do it now or do it in a month. What is it that you brought that we haven't seen?
The old subdivision plans prior to 2020, which included in the calculation of contiguous building area land that was just under the bylaw, but not under DEP.
Okay, so I'm...
But how does that, how would that change? Are you saying that because you showed us an example, that we should, that we should be changing how we look at this?
And, you know, maybe it's, it's twofold. I mean, one is, it's consistent with the way we're reading the section. And the second is, if there was some sort of a change, you know, that may provide some basis for a variance as well, because you have people that are relying upon a certain interpretation, and somehow the interpretation changes, and therefore their ability to develop their land is impacted by a change in interpretation. There's not been a change in the bylaw.
Well, except that you said that the change in interpretation, if it even indeed happened, it would have been in 2020, but the application to put into the planning board was in, even, was just in last year. So it's not like anybody put in this new petition based on old interpretations.
No, but they bought the property with the idea of it's, it's, it's a large area, with the idea that it can be subdivided.
Well, I mean, a lot of things changed since the 80s, though.
But this hasn't. This section hasn't changed.
This was from 1986.
Right.
This, this, the CBA definition was adopted in 1986.
But if the wetlands have changed, they will change, and that's the thing that is just...
But the basing, the basing on the current wetland situation, so that's...
Well, but they didn't base their decision... Well, but they didn't base their decision in the eighties on the current wetland situation.
When his mother was able to create the slot back then, I can almost, I'm not betting my life on it. I'll bet you like a hundred bucks that the sweatlands wasn't here. So that wasn't even an issue.
But I.
It's not that big of an area.
I knew the people who lived there, I think it was there.
Yeah, but let me, you guys got to realize, you could create a lot, it's a non-buildable lot.
Right, it hasn't gone any further than that. No one said that it was approved as a building lot. You could separate any lot.
Well, yeah.
We had, we had that issue in the lot next to Al Prime. It was a lot, but it was a non-buildable lot, much to the dismay of the people who bought the lot. Couldn't do it, so.
Tried to build.
Yeah, Paul pointed very well, this is very good, that it could be a lot, but you just can't build on it.
So what, what's the purpose of, of creating a lot that you can't build on?
Well, I mean, like, next to Al Prime, it was probably just by defunct it happened. These people are, but they're purposely creating the lot for building.
And I agree with you, okay, if you can believe this, okay, that back in the day when their parents had it, there was probably no wetlands there. So there was no issue.
There were.
Yeah, but we don't know that.
You know, but I'd be happy to provide you a little bit of detail on this line. When you look at, if you could scroll up a little bit, that the wetlands haven't moved, in fact, that there's a drainage ditch, sure, two properties here. You know Joe Alverka's living in Al's, Old House, Al McGee's old place? And then the Kev Keller Kavanaugh folks living there now, they dug a ditch, their drainage ditch is only on the Brown Cape, that's on the corner of Marble Ridge and Salem. They dug a ditch, they put some stones on the edges of it, it's seasonal, closes sometimes in the spring if there's a lot of water. This house that Joe's living in, no ditch. All right, so that, this line is very much defined by a backhoe in the 1990s that digs that ditch, keeps it permanent. And I know they did it because they didn't want water in their backyard, right?
Okay, so they're messing with conservation.
Yeah. Listen, that's. On Marble Ridge, that area that you're talking about, that second house, not that, I think it's the second, I see hoses draped down, drainage, I've seen them draped on the sidewalk, coming out of those, out of those, not the corner house, either this, coming up Marble Ridge.
Yeah, the second one?
With water, okay, so there is water draining from somewhere, because they have hoses running out onto the sidewalks.
You're talking about the house that has kind of gone back to, kind of the beginnings of forest?
Well, no, I don't, I don't think it's quite that far.
Yeah, that one.
You're being.
So, but, you know, the hoses and kind of what's happening there, I'd be hard pressed to.
The reason I bring it up is that, whenever that was that I saw that, okay, there is at some point, there is water somewhere that someone's trying to get rid of. That's what I saw, and that's what I'm sharing.
Yeah. No, I, I wouldn't be able to offer anything there, obviously.
Could I make a suggestion? If, if the board decides to overrule Paul and agree with.
I'm sorry.
Applicant?
Yeah, applicant, thank you, I couldn't remember the word, petitioner, applicant, yeah. Then, then we're done. If we decide not to, then it becomes a variance discussion. But I would like to handle, makes more sense to me to handle the first question first. And, I hate to use the word and now, you got to be really self-conscious about that. I haven't heard anything new. I understand what you're saying, I think I've heard it now. So unless there's something to add to that.
There isn't. I mean, other than, if you, if you wanted to look at prior plans, and you, and you don't want to take it now, then we'd ask to continue it to next month, and we can certainly provide copies of, of plans.
Well, I have a question about that. So you have, I guess, some exhibits there that demonstrate prior to 2020 it was ruled another way. Have there been any subdivisions that have been brought to the town since then that have been rejected for the same reason?
No.
So is this the first, this is the first one since 2020 that's been?
In the four or five I've done since 2020, it's been consistent now that they include the buffer zone.
They include, they include it, but.
Yeah, because.
But maybe they, maybe they had enough space.
Because what I'm doing, you know, I submit to Jeanne, and right, she's been consistent since that time, Paul's been here since that time, so it's the same staff members and how they review it. So the few that I've had, it's been consistent.
But do they still, maybe they still had the 75%, that's why we didn't see it? So, so even in those cases, if they included the buffer zone, they still had the 75% contiguous area, so you didn't have to come to us?
I did one off of Ray Street on a huge property for, it's, it has mosquito brook, but it was such a large lot that I broke off, it didn't impact the development.
So there haven't been any others like this that have come to us?
No, this one impacts this, this, so we're here for it. The other ones, I had such, I had one on Great Pond Road, I had one on Ray Street, they were big lots.
So, so nothing that's caused it to be rejected?
Right, so we were still able to get, signed off by the planning board, every, CBA, I worked out with Paul and Jean, and it was fine. It's when it came to the smaller, you know, you're at a minimum lot size, a wetland offsite, that's, that's why we're here.
I guess the only purpose I see to overturning this ruling, especially if it becomes a habit, and it's not just this one property, is to enable increasing density, like, with, very close to wetlands. And that doesn't feel like it's in line with the regulations that we're looking at to make this decision. I guess that's kind of where I'm at on this.
I don't, just to kick back on that, I don't think, the Conservation Commission still has jurisdiction within 100 feet.
Right.
They're, they're strict, this isn't opening it up for, oh, this is going to make things a lot easier.
But so what's, what's the underlying point of CBA? It's to deter, it's to limit the amount of close buildings that can be right up against each other, right? Or like, we're building lots?
Density.
Right, density. So to enable more of the protected area to be considered as part of the buildable land is to enable increased density near a wetland, if we do this all the time. In this case, it's one house, obviously it doesn't feel like it makes a big difference, but, you know, if the next petitioner comes to us and says, oh, well, you let McLaughlin do it, why not me?
Every application is looked on.
I get it, I get it. I guess I just.
I understand the precedent.
I understand. I guess I would feel hard pressed to say no to everyone after this.
I guess in that, in that argument, though, if it's the, for the case of protecting wetlands, if, if, if he was in a different area of town that didn't have the same lot size, he'd be allowed to do it.
Right, it would be an increased density zone.
Density zoning issue, but.
Right.
But, but the wetland issue, if you're looking at it as a protection of wetland, it wouldn't protect it in a, in a different area of town with a smaller lot size.
Well, except that, except that including the buffer zone as part of the non-CBA area is part of that process.
But if they only need a 10,000 square feet for a lot, they'd do it, and it would still have the same impact on a wetland, or not, or not impact on a wetland, if, just because of the fact that it's in this zone versus another zone of town.
I understand, but like.
So I don't, I don't think.
But all the zoning laws are about density relative to other part, like, relative their area in town, but.
Right, but it's sort of mixed, it's mixing zoning and, and wetlands.
Not really, because apparently zoning takes into account wetlands when it takes into account CBA. So, you know, if we're to look at the zoning, just the zoning part, in terms of how we calculate CBA, which the point of CBA is to determine the relative density in that zone, I would say the only point of including that buffer zone in the CBA is to enable more houses to be built right around the periphery of a, a wetland. And I, I don't see that as in keeping with the, with the regulations involved here. It just really doesn't seem, like, it seems like quibbling over one single word that kind of seems like a loophole. And I don't, it doesn't make me feel good. I'm not, that's where, it's kind of where I'm at with that. Doesn't make me feel like it's in keeping with what the town is asking us to do. Okay.
Could I move to close public discussion?
No. Not yet.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Let's dream a little bit. If we were to continue this, and you go to zoning, excuse me, no, zoning, conservation.
They're not going to be able to go to conservation, because conservation already went with Paul to town council, and.
Oh, conservation's already going with Paul.
Because it is a, we're in a resource area.
So you're asking, I saw overturn conservation?
No, I expect conservation is, again, as I said, there is no question that under the bylaw, this is a resource area. I don't think there's any question that under the Wetlands Protection Act, it's not.
So this will not be going to conservation after us?
Only if there's work that's done within a jurisdiction of conservation.
And we can't send this to conservation, right?
And, because there's nothing for conserva, I mean, conservation is, I would assume conservation is going to say that there's a buffer.
And, and the sentence is going to town council. Conservation's going to town council, and town council's come up with the, the final page here, right?
Right. However.
Is that the way I see it?
I don't like necessarily slamming the door in people's faces. So, does anyone else have any other questions from the board? Okay. This is what I think your options are going to be. I can tell you, any documents you have that weren't submitted with the application, I will not look at. Board members in the past have been very strict of, if it's not submitted with the application, or it's not submitted prior to us having a chance to look at it, we're not looking at it. I looked at this tonight, because I don't see this as being your fault if you're not provided the letter to be provided to us. So that's why I put my eyes on that letter. I'm looking at the case law that you've cited, and I guess one of the things, because this board's biggest thing is, is trying to argue this, this wonderful one little three-letter word of and. So I will give you the choice. I don't know if the board would agree with me on this, but it is your decision to keep the meeting open, or close it and have a vote taken tonight. So you can continue, and one of the things I would, I guess, kind of want you to try and dig and try is, town council doesn't give us any actual case law that I can put my finger on, to see if this whole issue of or, and and, and the conjunction, or similarity, or connector are, are something that I, I can, you know, stand on. If you want to take this month and see if you're capable of finding any case law that actually does address this, we could continue.
Just on clear, address the difference between and and or?
See if there's any case law that actually, and I think one of the things the board, and I'm, I am currently now taking this and speaking for the board, is the board is having a hard time with and and or. And I understand you are paid for by the applicant, so you're going to push us to make the decision that's most beneficial to them. I would like to see what a judge has to say, if it's out there. And it might not be. And if it's not, you know, you might have just bought yourself a month, but it's not necessarily something that's going to hurt you.
Okay, if you can give me a minute to talk to my client.
Okay. Or, we can close the meeting tonight and take a vote.
Would we be closing it just on the overrule of Paul, or on the variances?
Well, no, because it's on, it's one, it's one application, so we would.
But it's your application.
Well, we'd be continuing the whole spiel, the finding and the variance.
Right, right. But if we close it.
If we close, we're closing on both.
Okay. Because he just thought they would, I didn't know they would do it.
No, but if we close, if we close the overmeeting, we make a decision on finding, we make a decision on the variance.
Yeah, but we're, so we haven't discussed, had any discussion yet about the.
Well, because, listen, if you make a decision on the finding, then we're done. It's if you don't make, if your decision on the finding is adverse to them, then you go on to the variance.
Well, that's what I mean, if we close it, then we haven't had discussion with them about the variance.
But it's, it's going to, the same thing's going to apply. You still have the issue of and or, you still have the issue of, do they meet the CBA?
No, if it's a variance, there, it's, you're accepting that that's the case, and now you're saying is a, is a variance warranted?
It's two, it's two different things.
I don't see how.
But here's my, here's my problem. You go through all the case law you want to, I won't understand it. I won't know if it's the right case law, the wrong case law. I, I have to go with what our town council says is the right legal interpretation. So unless you want to wait for me to go through law school, which I actually decided not to do when I was 21, it may not be beneficial.
Well, except that, like, it would give us an indication, because in theory, if we give an adverse decision on this, they could appeal this to. Well, we're getting sued. Right. So I want to see if the judge. How it would hold on.
He says on this.
Oh, my apologies, yeah, I guess we should be, because they're out discussing.
Okay.
So, listen, first live meeting as a chair.
It's still an open meeting, though. They can come in.
It is, but.
That was their call to leave.
But here, we're standing.
Yeah. Fair play.
The balance.
Open meeting law, section four, blah, 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 blah.
Listen, I had to, I had to do open meeting, and what was the other one?
Yeah, there were two of them.
Ethics.
Didn't we all have to do that? I didn't do that.
No, the chairs had to. We were required, yours was voluntary.
No, no, one of them we were all required, and I think the ethics one was just the chairs, although I did it.
Yeah, see.
Did you do the cyber one too?
I definitely did. I don't know.
Annual event.
Jen just kept sending me emails for things to sign up, and I didn't realize there was multiple things, and I'm like, yeah, I got that done.
Yeah, they were two different, I know. At first I thought they were the same thing.
Somebody can take the gavel back, I don't want it anymore.
You did a good job, you did.
I think we should take it back. There's no way.
It is fun that if the first live meeting is like a sticky wicket, you're like, oh, damn. Couldn't have an easy, like.
I liked it better when I filled in for him, those are.
What was that, Four Family Suites? Oh, in like 45 minutes?
So, can I, can, this is kind of business, I mean.
No.
I can't talk.
No. I'm going to get, I'm already going to, I'm already going to get in trouble.
Pertaining to this application, or pertaining to, like.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to, I mean, I'm.
You're going to get in trouble.
I have a question about the variance, but I won't go there.
Don't go there yet, because I'm going to get in trouble. I'm supposed to be the ringleader.
Well, you got the hammer, so you'll just get someone.
Has anyone ever actually used the gavel?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't have that, only over meeting law, if they leave. How can you not use it when it's right there?
Does anyone remember, it was when we had remote meeting, and was it, was it Paul got PO'd with us and made all of us take a vote that we were going to keep our mouths shut?
Yes.
Do you remember, you were the only one that wouldn't agree to take that vote. If he had a gavel, I swear to God, that thing would have been thrown out a window. You don't remember? Oh, he was, he, see, what, okay, you weren't on the board, so this doesn't include you. The only females remember when a man screams at the top of his lungs and wants a vote, so childish.
But doesn't the gavel, doesn't it come with like a little thing that you're supposed to hit?
Yeah.
Can you just hit a regular desk, is that allowed?
You can, but is it allowed, is a different question.
That's the question.
Sorry.
No, 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 I'm just saying, just don't hit that.
How about the microphone?
He's listening to Led Zeppelin.
He's listening to Led Zeppelin over there.
Right, he's, he likes, he likes to wait for like the juicy stuff. Nothing juicy tonight. No, I know, sorry. Don't worry, I'm sure we'll get some heated ones in the next year since I took over. We'll get a couple 40Bs, maybe a massive development, another apartment complex going up.
They're saving it up for you.
You know.
Listen, yeah.
You know that airport, right?
What airport?
Across from the airport.
Lawrence Airport? Lawrence Airport?
Across from Lawrence Airport?
The fine, the fine senior center we're building.
Do you know how many people have told me that they agreed with my decision after the fact?
What was your decision?
I voted against it, because I was, oh, you want to get me fumed? You want to get my blood boiling?
No, no, just, I don't want to go there.
Needless to say, I was the only board member who voted no, the only one, and I fought that thing tooth and nail. And then, of course, when it goes up, everybody's like, oh, the thing's massive.
Yeah, but let me see, where would you put something like that? I mean, that's a perfect.
Ready, ready? I'm going to tell you where I would put it.
Nice location.
I'm going to tell you where I would put it. Malden.
Oh.
Malrose. Quincy.
I always have it.
I really don't think.
Hey, you leave my house alone.
I really don't think it's that shocking of a.
No, I, not in that location.
And you drive by, you pass it in five seconds. The, oh, my biggest concern was for the, for the neighbors on the road behind you.
They moved the taller one out front because the neighbors asked for the shorter one to be out back. That's why it looks so massive. The tall one was supposed to be out backwards.
But you know what? I feel, listen, here's my thing. I get, like.
We open the back up?
We've closed the meeting while you guys have stepped out, so we will open the meeting back up now that you have returned. It provides the benefit, there's no rush, and I miss bedtime for my kids, so, you know, I can stay until 11, but let's not. All right, so what do we have?
Okay, just a couple of questions. We're happy to come back and we're happy to do some research. If we can find a case that talks about and or, is there a time that you'd like our research submitted by? Or is that something we can bring to you?
Are there no, are there time? April 29?
28.
28.
Okay.
For the Bay meeting, right? So what if they want to come back in the June meeting?
No, but we're, I'm just talking about them submitting, like, additional documents. They can basically do it all the way up until the next meeting, can't they?
No, because we won't get them in time.
All documents until 28th, yeah.
Oh, okay. So the 28th?
Okay, we'll, we'll deal with the 28th.
You can do it by email to Jennifer.
Or I can give you the plans that I'm going to submit if you want them tonight. I'm happy to give that to you tonight.
You can give them to us tonight, so we can have them for the next meeting?
I'd rather see them go through Jen.
You can give them to Jen, and then she'll pass them on to us when.
Jen, do you want hot copies as well? Okay, I'll give you the hot copies right away.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll take care of that, and then we'll provide whatever research we can find by 28th. Specifically on the question of, what matter judge has talked about the difference between and and or?
I'd say obviously, you know, focus on Mass. I care more about Mass than surrounding states. If you have to go to appeals level, federal court.
Okay, we'll see, see if there is.
I want, I just want you guys to have the opportunity to be able to try and throw that at us.
Okay. Are there any other questions or anything else you'd like us to address that we haven't addressed tonight?
Anything else? If forever holds peace.
Well, I, I, I still feel like we haven't talked about option two of the variance.
Okay, option two.
Well.
I guess I don't know the sequencing.
Why would we do that tonight?
It would be useless.
Well, unless.
Well, there might be additional information they want to get.
Well, unless there's more information you'd like relative to the, yeah, that's, that would be appreciated.
I'm not opposed to addressing the issue of the variance. If there's anything else you want to add or if there's any questions?
So I, let me just, I saw in the document, if the house was to be built, so the crushstone driveway, which goes to the barn, is going to go away, and that's going to be moved over, or that becomes the, the, there was some reference that it would, I thought it was going away and it was going to be transferred to the new house.
It's not going away. A, a small portion of the driveway would encroach onto Lot 1 presently. So I just made a note that the, it should be relocated. The crushstone driveway will remain, but it'll be relocated entirely on where the old house is. We don't want a portion of the driveway to, to the old barn and house being.
Yeah, you don't want to have to do an easement.
We'd have to create an easement, correct. So I just made a note that it's to be relocated entirely onto the, to the old house.
Where is the driveway for, where would the driveway be for the new house?
Oh, after they move it?
Well, I mean, the, the existing crushstone driveway is for the existing house.
So I didn't show it, but on, on the right-hand side of the, of the proposed house, it'd be a two-car garage. So there'd be a driveway that would come straight in.
Yeah, no, I saw the garage, I just wasn't sure. There was just no driveway.
What about adding Marble Ridge to the diagram so that we can see the, call it the, the wetland areas?
I can try to do that, yeah.
I would like to see Marble, I mean, I, when, you got a beautiful house there. I mean, like in 1700s?
Think about 1765.
I mean, it's like, okay, and I love the barn, okay, but I can't see anything in the back. I can only see Marble Ridge, and I can only see Salem. I mean, and so it's, the area that we're talking about is an area that I don't know what's there.
Invite all of you to come. You know, it's funny, if I could just, a couple more.
Can you just stand at the microphone?
The microphone.
Sure, a, a couple more minutes of your time. It's a little bit odd for me to be standing, to be, to be sitting behind Mr. Johnson, and at the same time, by the tenor of the conversation tonight, it's clear that if I had represented myself, it was a good idea that I got a legal expert.
Lawyers can be useful sometimes.
The two of us are teachers, you know, to, you talk a little bit about, I like the point that you made talking about the state law and the local, and I also appreciate, kind of personally, the idea of conservation. I'm, I'm with you. And, you know, and as you know, if you come by the house, the, the guy in the dirty hat that's out in the yard and on the ladder all the time, that's me. And, you know, I've been there a long time, family home. We're not doing this to line pockets. The two of us are teachers. We're at a point in our life where our kids are off and gone. Put two of them through college, and they came out without debt, so it gives you an idea of what we did. And the one thing that we have is, this is our one asset, and a little bit of, you know, 35 years of working in a kind of a standard retirement account. So that, you know, our motivation for doing it, yeah, it's financial, but kind of financial looking at, you know, we're 62. And, you know, but, but again, I appreciate conservation and the importance of it. And, you know, for us, it's a, it's a personal thing, and it's about the possibility of maybe retiring. Simple, right?
You're only 62, you're a young chicken.
Yeah, you know, I feel that way. And again, if you see me moving in the yard, you see the speed I do it at. That, you know, old place, lot of work, all the time, and to have done that at this zip code on a couple of teacher salaries and put two kids through college, we leaned on the house. You know, it's a second mortgage on it. Daughter number one went to a couple of the most expensive private universities in the country. Great. Whoopie. So I just, I just want to mention that, that we're, it, this isn't about kind of taking the money and running. This was all, I always considered this, or we considered this, this was kind of the card in the back pocket. Hey, there's this buildable lot, you know, and that, you know, personally, I wouldn't even think about doing it. You know, it, it conflicts with my memory and my experience, right? Haven't grown up there. And, you know, grandmother died in that in-law apartment, my mother died in that in-law apartment. It's not about cashing in. So I just throw that out. Intent's important, as is the letter of the law, and the and and the or, and all that stuff. And so I'll leave it at that. Anything for you?
I'm Lynn McLaughlin. I'm just wanted to make sure you all know, too, that I'm a townie from the beginning. My, my parents were townies, my grandparents were townies, my grandfather was the elementary school principal all his life. So we've established ourselves here all our lives, and my uncle was even the building inspector for a while. But like John said, this was always in our back pocket, thinking this is what we had. And this, if we don't have this, it, we're going to have a huge hardship. We're also getting divorced, so that is also another hardship. So this is pretty critical.
Well, we want to be able to give you, and it actually makes me think, there's any conservation records you guys have pertaining to this property? I know they had mentioned back in 20, what was it, 2019, when they originally got the lot split?
1980.
1980 something?
Right.
Don't go spending hours. If you can't find it, don't worry about it. It's more of a, I'm kind of just curious to see where the, the wetlands.
It would give me a better idea of what the expectation was over time.
Yeah, if the plan was recorded, if it was two lots at one point, I can find that quickly.
Okay. And I ask, I mean, you know, I'm thinking somewhat of my own personal experience. I, I deal with wetlands in my own house, and it is in no way, shape, or form fun. So I have huge amounts of sympathy in dealing with wetlands, because at one point in time, I could do anything I wanted. Not so much anymore. So if you can find something on that, that would be helpful.
Then might have something to record.
Yep.
If there's records that you have, since your, your family has been in the house for so long, you can just give it to your council and they can pass it on, along to us. You know, we're trying to, to make a decision that kind of we all can sleep on, okay. As much as we do look at every application on its own merits, it is very hard even for myself to sit here and say, okay, if I make a decision today, can I live with it for the next person that comes in? So.
And again, and all appreciated, and appreciate your stewardship of the town and what you do here. You know, I teach history, and that includes teaching civics classes on occasion. Cool what you do. Thanks.
So get us the docs?
Well, I was just going to ask about, have you had any conversation with neighbors? I know they, no one showed up here. I didn't see any letters or.
You know, you're casual, and the neighbors, they further up Salem know pretty well. They got a couple of kids who like to come over and play in the yard. We see each other pretty regularly, and they're, they're good. And the folks in the back at the corner of Marble Ridge, you know, they saw them this weekend, and they didn't mention anything. Quiet. I, I don't have much of a conversation with Joe or Borka, and kind of over the fence, though.
If there's not anything else, then.
No.
We will continue time waiver, right, Jen? Okay. So you just have to sign a time waiver, and that's it? And then don't forget to give the hard copies to Jen. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate all the time. Didn't need to take that long.
Do we need to vote on a content?
Oh, yeah. I'm getting there, I'm getting there. There are certain things on the top of my head I don't want to forget. Can I have a second? Can I have a vote? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
It's not like, you're usually.
I, I understand everything, and everything has been said.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
I'll third it.
Wait, did Jen get all of that? I think she was doing just double duty over there.
We adjourn.
Oh, he didn't say aye yet. We got the motion.
It was, who, who, who adjourns?
Ron made a motion to, to continue.
Okay, all right.
Frank seconded. It was a unanimous aye. Then Ron made a motion to adjourn. Who seconded?
Alan.
Alan seconded.
And now we vote.
And you can use the word and. No, we can't use that. We don't know what that means.